Welcome to the January 5, 2016 County Commission Meeting. Reminds you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are in the front row in a white binder. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row in the blue shirt and he can help you with that. With that, we will go on to our special business meeting. First one is to open the meeting. And I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next item number three is selection of a county commission chairperson for 2016. Are there any nominations, Commissioner Benega?
I would like to make a motion to continue with Cindy Heiburger as the chairperson for 2016.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I just feel like there's been a lot of changes at the commission level this year and consistency would be helpful for a year.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
No, but are we going to take a second motion then?
Did you need a second motion?
Well, a second nomination.
If there are a second nomination?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Barth.
The nomination.
I'll second that nomination.
I have a nomination for Jeff Barth.
Comment?
Commissioner Kelly?
I made comments last year regarding when Cindy was reappointed and I... Those comments still stand. Jeff's been on this commission for 10 years. We try to portray ourselves as non-political. I think this is probably the only time it ever raises its head. We have to go back into the 70s to find a chair that's been re-elected for a third term. There's five members on this board. I think any one of the five of us are capable of running, of being the chair even though that's not held by everyone. I really think that your consideration for Jeff as chair, it brings a little fresh blood into the thing. I think continuity is a good thing, but continuity also has its problems. And the fact that we just continue not to look at any others, I realize there are some objections to me. I'm not sure why, but I... So I stand with my nomination for Jeff.
The second nomination with a motion and a second. Sarah, would you tell me how I do this? When we have two nominations?
We vote on the first one and then go to the next.
We vote on the first one and then... Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the first nomination, which is for myself to remain chairman, and we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
No.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. Do we vote on the second motion?
That would be moot. Madam Chair, if I might just comment, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. So we are done with item number three. Item number four is selection of a commission vice chairman for 2016. Is there a motion? Commissioner Benega? Bender? Excuse me.
Based on my same comments, that I think consistency for one year would be very helpful here, I would nominate Gerald Benega as the vice chair.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for Commissioner Benega to stay as vice chair. Any other comments? Do we need a roll call vote again? Do roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is the designation of the official county newspaper, Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson at the commission office. In accordance with SDCL 718-3, the county commission must designate three legal newspapers in the county at the first regular meeting in January. Currently, those newspapers are the Argus Leader, the Dell Rapids Tribune, and the Minnehaha Messenger. The Argus Leader and Dell Rapids Tribune are owned by Gannett Publishing. Minnehaha Messenger is owned by Anderson Publications. Until November 2015, Anderson Publications also owned the Garretson Gazette. Anderson Publications has and continues to publish county legal notices in the Gazette as well as the Messenger at no additional cost. In November, Anderson Publications sold the Garretson Gazette to Garrick Morissette. Mr. Morissette has committed to continue publishing county legal notices in the Gazette in 2016 at no additional cost. With this, Minnehaha County has been publishing in four county newspapers exceeding the statutory requirement. I have enclosed copies of letters from both the Argus Leader making a request that the Argus Leader, Dell Rapids Tribune, and Brandon Challenger be named the three legal newspapers for Minnehaha County for 2016. I've also enclosed a letter from Anderson Publications requesting that the Minnehaha Messenger remain a legal newspaper of the county and committing to continuing to publish notices in both the Garretson Gazette and the Minnehaha Messenger. Now, we have broken down the monies paid to the papers in 2015, and this includes legal publication for all county departments. It's not just... Does not include non-legal publication such as employment ads or other ads. And would say that on a monthly average, you paid the Argus Leader roughly $3,700, the Dell Rapids Tribune $1,500, and the Minnehaha Messenger and the Garretson Gazette $1,035. Now, the rates in October of 2003, Argus legal rates increased 1.5% to $5.39 per inch. The Argus has held that same rate since, and they have indicated that that rate will remain the same for 2016 as well. The state-approved minimum rate for large papers is $6.04 per inch. The rate per line for 2016 for the Dell Rapids Tribune and the Brandon Valley Challenger will continue at 31.1 cents per line with a discount of 10% for minutes. This has been the same rate since 2004, and they have offered a combo rate with both the Dell Rapids Tribune and Brandon Challenger of 55.5 cents per line if you designate the Brandon Challenger as one of the legal newspapers. In addition to the letters from the Argus Leader and Anderson Publication indicating interest in serving as legal newspapers, I've also provided an email from Matt Anderson, owner of the Anderson Publications, verifying that the Garretson Gazette meets all statutory requirements to be designated as a legal newspaper. The Garretson Gazette is one of the recognized legal newspapers for the city of Garretson and the Garretson School District. Now, I do expect that we have a representative from the Argus Leader here who may wish to comment on your action today. And I will defer if you'd like to... Mr. Redfern?
Just a minute. Yeah. First, most of all, saying good morning and happy new year. I just want to let you know that the Argus Leader also, your minutes in your legos are also appearing on ArgusLeader.com. One of the changes, Carol reached out to me earlier, latter part of last year, and asked if there's a way that we can make those more dominant, make them aware that they appear. I will let you know, starting in 2016, they now are appearing on the homepage, which will be a link as public notices that will go right to those legos from ArgusLeader.com.
Could you give your name too?
Yes, Kelly Redfern. I'm the ad director at Argus Leader Media. Sorry, I should have started with that.
That's okay. Just wanted for television media too.
Absolutely. Is there any questions that I can possibly answer?
Any questions for Kelly? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other owners of newspapers in the room here today? I think there was some conflicts from what I'd heard. Okay. Back to the commission. Discussion, thoughts, motions as to... We need three legal newspapers. Commissioner Benega?
I would make a motion if we continue with the same three newspapers as last year.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. And I also have a comment. I don't know if there's any other comments. If we changed this and had the Argus Leader and the Minnehaha Messenger and their Garretson Gazette, we'd save $16,000 a year, and we would still have three legal newspapers. So I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't consider changing because they're all legal newspapers. And the Argus Leader does publish online, and I think we'd still reach a tremendous amount of Minnehaha County, and most people get the Argus Leader. So that's my comment. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
I have to say I agree with you on that. And so I will not be voting for this first motion.
I will say that, if I might, that I can't add in my head this morning. Spent too much time watching the Packers win this game.
It's two days ago, sir.
He's still trying to recover.
I would agree with that comment, and I would withdraw my motion.
Okay. That motion has been withdrawn. Is there another motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the plan outlined by the chair.
Which would be the Argus Leader, the Messenger, and the Garretson Gazette as the three legal newspapers for publications? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We will try that for a year. Item number six is establish record of non-elected department heads. And who do we have? Carol, are you speaking on that, or is Robert?
Commissioner Robert Wilson again, commission office. This is the opportunity to recognize the non-elected department heads that are employed with the county. It is, again, one of our things that we do on the first meeting of each year. We have provided that list to you, and that list is available for anybody who wants to review it. But we are looking for your record of the non-elected department heads for 2016.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we should read the names and the departments?
I was wondering, Robert, did you just want to read them? Do you have them there? Otherwise, I've got them. I can read them too. I can do it. Carol Muller, commission office. Monte Wattenbach, IT. DJ Boothy, Highway. Jamie Grabett, Juvenile Justice Systems Center. Lloyd Olson, Facilities. Bill Hoskins, Museum. Carrie Dever, Human Services. Scott Anderson, Planning and Zoning in Parks. Julie Hofer, Public Advocate. Tracy Smith, Public Defender. Carrie Benz, Human Services. Kyle Halseth, Equalization. Lyndie Young, Emergency Management. Darren Ketchum, Metro Communications. Ralph Hammer, Weeds and Pest. Pat Copra, Veterans Service Officer. And Charles Martineau, 4H Advisor. Is there a motion to approve those positions for this next year?
It's my motion.
You don't need a motion? We don't need a motion. We just need to recognize it as a part of the record. So thank you. Item number seven is appoint the Minnehaha County Coroner. This is also just a yearly event. Robert?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. The coroner is Dr. Kenneth Snell. I have a motion and a second, and it has passed unanimously. Item number eight is determine the 2016 salary for Minnehaha Commissioners. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, commission office. Yes, this is your organizing meeting, and as such, according to state law, you have the responsibility at this time to establish the salary for each of you to serve as Minnehaha County Commissioners. If the board fails to determine a salary, then the salary is set at statute for $8,193. The budget discussions this past summer, held for 2016, included a review of commissioner pay. At the time, the commission chose not to budget for an increase, understanding that actual decisions about commission pay occurred during the first commission meeting of each year. The 2016 budget includes a salary of $26,000. As you consider pay for 2016, note that the commission compensation has only risen by 2% in total since 2011. During the same timeframe, the cost of living has risen approximately 10%. Market data reflects that Minnehaha County Commissioner pay is 13% lower than comparable organizations, which averaged $29,409 for 2015 rates. Although it is difficult to support an increase given our financial situation, the purpose of market-based pay is to set compensation levels at fair and appropriate amounts to attract future well-qualified candidates for elected offices. Levels that are adequate, not excessive. Past discussions have included reflection of several conservative increases versus a more dramatic adjustment. I would also remind commissioners and the listening public that Minnehaha County Commissioners do not receive health insurance. They do not receive retirement benefits, nor do they receive any compensation or any mileage when they are doing in-county constituents. That has not been history to go through and happen. The salary is divided into 26 pay periods, so whatever you would like to set that at, we need to have that motion made.
Okay. Questions, comments, motions?
Madam Chair?
Barth?
In the past couple of years, I've suggested a 1% raise based on the idea that 1% regularly is easier than 20% on a... Every decade. And I'll renew that motion of 1%.
Is there a second to the 1%? Is there a second to the 1%? Motion dies for the lack of a second, although I would make a comment after Jeff's comment, and that is, I have been resistant in voting for raises, and because I don't think it's necessary. This is a public office. But I guess I've kind of changed my mind on that because we have an election coming up again next year, and I think Carol is correct in saying that. You do need to make this attractive for someone to run if they're doing it as part of their income. If we continue to say no every year, we're already 13% behind the market. When a new commission sits up here, they're not going to come up here and say we need to have a 13% raise because you can't do that. It would be horrible. But Jeff's probably right. If we did a 1% or a 2% at least once in a while so we don't continue to fall so far behind the market rate, and maybe none of us feel like we specifically need the raise, but what if the next people coming in, in the next two years or the next four years, do need that payment in order to make their own personal budgets work? And so I think that it's partly our responsibility. This is an awkward situation to put us in, to have us set our own pay because you get a lot of backlash at times. But I also have plenty of constituents that say Minnehaha County Commissioners do a lot of work, and they do not get paid adequately for what they do. And that's not just us. That's going forward to the next commission. So that's my comment on it. I would need a motion at some point to make, to set some type of a salary. Commissioner Bender?
Commissioner Heiburger, I have one question for Carol. I'm curious if you could elaborate on the, when you talk about the 13% for comparable organizations, where those numbers came from?
And actually, I would defer to Human Resources Director Carrie Dever.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Carrie Dever, Human Resources. The market data is based on the same market data that we use for our compensation study, so it includes organizations of a comparable size, mostly from our region. Pennington County, Lincoln Counties, and that number. We have a couple in Minnesota, a couple in Iowa. I apologize, I didn't bring the exact organizations with me, but it's the same as you've used to set your other elected officials.
So it'd be other county organizations?
Other county organizations.
Not city or other organizations? Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions about salary? We need some type of a motion on salary for 2016.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'll make a motion to increase our salaries 2%.
I have a motion for 2%. Is there a second? I would actually pass the gavel and second that motion. I don't know if I have to pass it or not, but I will second Jeff's motion since nobody's seconded the 1.
Is there a second?
I seconded his motion.
Any comments, questions?
The comment is still the same. It's just that we may, it's very uncomfortable, and I don't feel that we probably need the raise, but I think going forward, it needs to be looked at. Bob?
May I, Madam Chair? Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And I too think that, and I've been up here a couple of times, that you need to have the political courage to go ahead and give these small incremental raises every year. We've got to, you know, and I'm, all of you work very, very hard. And to draw new people into this after you're gone, it's going to be a thing. So at one point or another, you're going to be stuck with either a large raise at one time or these little nibbling away. And I understand uncomfortable because I got to count the ballots when I'm on the, when I'm running the election. But I would just hope that this time that you folks could give yourselves a raise, so to speak, and, you know, just let the chips fall where they may, and it bodes well for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Colby, you want to come to the microphone?
Having a little bit of a historic perspective on this.
You do need to give us your name even if we all know...
Bob Colby, local citizen. Back in the 80s, I first came to watch this organization and didn't have any idea what the salary was like. I ran. I was elected. That was sworn in this time of the year in 1989. I think the job then paid around $12,000. Maybe it was a little more than eight because I know that we had a lot of angst about doing this. And when the Minnehaha County Commission raised its salary, it gave permission to the other county commissioners around the state to look at it and actually do something about I was amazed at that time because my first teaching job was $5,500. This has gone up. And the best analogy or the best description of a county commissioner in at least South Dakota, being that it's a part-time job, is that it's a part-time job 24 hours a day. I mean, I was, when I was on your side of the bench, I had calls wanting me to sign off on somebody going to the Human Services Center at 3:00 a.m., and the person would drive themselves there and admit themselves, and that scared the bejesus out of me. So it's something you have to do. You don't often get adequately compensated for all the extra time, the times that you go and do things, the times that you meet with people, the liaison duties that you do. Most people aren't aware that you are involved with going to other meetings with other organizations, whether it's the Sioux Falls Development Foundation or whether it's going to, let's see, it was Sioux Volk Achieve, it's now whatever. Somebody's on that board, and they sit and they listen, and they bring information back when you have to do your budgeting. So I would say that you have to do something. Maybe you don't want to do the inflation, but you at least have to do something in order to keep encouraging appropriate people to come and run for this particular job.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just point out that over the last 10 years, the average county employee has gotten, you know, 10 times, 2.5%. So think about that.
Other questions, comments? If not, we do have a motion on the table for a 2% increase. And I probably would like a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
No? Benega?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
For 2%, you can have this back.
Thank you. Motion fails. Three, two, two.
I'd make a motion for no change in the salary.
I have a motion for no change. Is there a second?
We have, you people, if we don't make a motion on our salary, we're going to be, we're going to be a long ways down the road. So we need to do something. Carrie?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I've struggled with this issue because I've watched you now for five years, and I watched the commission in front of you choose to set the salary well below market-based pay. I know market's a difficult position. I know you're in a difficult position in voting on your salary, but at least market is defendable. It's there for a reason. You have been historically extraordinarily conservative in setting salary for this commission. When it was initially implemented, the commission then went well below what the market was supposed to be. You're sitting at 13%. I'm going to reiterate Carol's earlier comment, that the comp data that we're giving you doesn't take into consideration the fact that other commissioners around the region also receive additional benefits. I'm asking you to think of this position like you would any other, in so much as that you understand that you do need to find a balance here. You're being conservative, and I support you in being conservative, but I would at least ask that you consider a nominal increase. Maybe you want to be closer to CPI for this year and go with a 1.5%, but I would strongly encourage you to consider just a nominal increase if you would. I've said my piece. Thank you.
I have a motion to leave the salary at $26,000. I do not have a second. Motion dies for a lack of the second? Or is there going to be a second?
I'm a little confused as to what we want.
I am too.
$100 is adequate salary.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Commissioner Bender?
I just, you know, I struggle with this. To be honest with you, having done this now for a little over 11 months, I'm not sure what would be a fair number to get qualified people to view this as a job that is desirable because I'm not sure that there is a number monetarily that gets you there. And I'm not a, you know, I mean, it's very uncomfortable for me to vote for a raise because frankly, to me, you know, it doesn't, it wouldn't make a difference. And I'm not sure, you know, frankly, for the people that you want to take this position that it makes a difference. But I am very, I am very understanding of the position and the argument that we should do something. And I do frankly think, as a taxpayer, not sitting in this hot seat, that I would think that was the responsible thing to do. That as a taxpayer, I think it would be responsible to, you know, $260 a person frankly is nothing. $1,300 in our budget is nothing. It's really symbolic more than anything. And I was curious to see how this would play out this morning. I really came here not having a strong feeling about how I would, I would move this ball forward. But since there doesn't seem to be an overwhelming consensus to leave it where it is, and I think that we do need to do something because this isn't very productive for the taxpayers either, for us to sit here and do this, I would make a motion to go at CPI at 1.5%.
Do we have a second for 1.5%?
I'll second that, or we will be here all morning.
That's right. We have a motion and a second to increase the pay from the current, which is $26,000, by 1.5% over this year. The motion is second.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is very difficult, and, you know, I would feel much more comfortable if the sheriff was to pick the number because I'm perfectly comfortable picking. I am comfortable picking his salary. You know, it's, I remember working for a private corporation, and our CEO wrote himself whatever he wanted, and I think in his last year before he went to prison, he got $200 million. He had to pay bad things, Gerald. But still, you know, it's wrong when you write yourself that kind of a, kind of a salary. And I don't think we're wrong here, and I appreciate Commissioner Bender's thinking on this. It is tough to do your own if you have a conscience.
So we have a motion for a 1.5% increase. Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly? Heiburger?
Yes.
I make a comment. I just don't want us being compared to somebody going to prison.
Item number nine is approval resolution to set the election workers' pay schedule.
Auditor Bob?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Good morning again. This is also an annual resolution that I ask you to pass every year. And in 2015, we made, we made some inroads into getting the pay up to, once again, market value here. So we're going to be set at the same pay rate that we, for 2016, as we were for 2015 with one exception.
with one exception. Now, I'd like to go through the amounts of money that folks get paid for their, their election days here. One of the main things is precinct superintendents are paid at a hundred and forty dollars per election. The precinct deputies are paid at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per election. I'd like to remind you that election day is a thirteen or a fourteen hour day. So you start back and into the math there. Once again, it's not all that much money. But to offset that a little bit, one other group that I failed to mention here is number three, the absentee committee, accounting center, and precinct assistants are paid ten fifty an hour. And I think paying them by the hour is the thing to do, because we never know how long they're going to be here. Certain groups of people are here for five hours, some of them are here for ten hours, some of them are here for thirteen hours. So, the per hour rate works out better for that group. It's not quite as big as the precinct superintendents and deputies. The day before, the Monday before the election, most, and I heavily encourage this at election school, the superintendent's and deputies, usually it's a couple, three of them, go to the location, they get in contact with the custodian, make sure the place is going to be open the next day, they set up the tables, the voting booths, the auto mark, and they get ready, you know, locating everything within that building, and then securing the location, and getting the ballot box into a secure location, so that they can pull that out the next morning. And usually that takes an hour, hour and a half, some of them two hours, depending on where they're at. But, so we're already paying the precinct setups. Like I say, that's Monday before the election. Last year, in twenty fifteen, we also approved a ten dollar stipend for somebody to have a cellphone in there, because some of the places that we're at, due to security concerns, they don't have access to the landlines that are normally in the office. So the cellphone, having that cellphone communication, one of them using their personal cellphone that day seems to work out pretty good, and we already have a ten dollar stipend per precinct for somebody to come forward with that cellphone. The new item that I would like you to approve, we're paying for the setup in the beginning. And a lot of workers have asked me, why at the end of the night, when we close down at seven o'clock, are we working for an hour, hour and a half or two more hours, closing this place down and not getting compensated for that? I thought the question was very fair. And so I told them that I would ask the, approach the commission, you know, on this, on this equity item. You know, we just went through a discussion about pay and getting the pay up there, and, you know, I think that these pay rates are getting to where they're, well, I don't know if they're our market in an election or not, but I do know this, that when, when, when I, when Sioux left, and I came in here, there was probably about twelve or fifteen percent of the workers decided that they were getting rather aged, and they were just going to retire and stop doing it. And last, the last couple of elections, I've had to scramble and spend a lot of hours on the phone trying to find people. A lot of them are younger people. And when I told them what these pay, even with their pay raises, why they're, they're not very interested in it. So I still have to appeal to patriotism, you know, in a sense of civic duty to get a lot of people to come down. I remember last year, I had a gal that, when I called her up to find out if she'd worked elections, she broke down in tears. And she says, I just can't do it anymore. I'm eighty-six years old, Bob. And she was so sorry. And I'm like, you don't need to be sorry, just thank you for your years of service on this here. And, you know, it's folks like that that make the election. It's not me, it's not the Secretary of State, it's those folks that are out there bringing in those ballots. So I would respectfully request that we leave the rate the same as it was at fifteen, in twenty fifteen, with the addition of fifteen dollars per session for the teardown after a long twelve-hour day.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution MC sixteen dash one.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner. See, do I, can I take a moment of personal privilege as well? It's not pers, it's kind of business like this here. Soon I will be bringing forward the precincts, to get your blessing on all the precincts here. I'd like you to know there's seventy-one of them. And this morning, when Commissioner Bender brought up the security issue in the building committee, I, it too has affected elections. Now, when I did my first election in twenty twelve, I had fourteen school locations. I'm down to six of those right now. And then if you throw IPC in there, that's seven. And one by one, they're going away. I was also asked by the Brandon School District to not hold elections out in Valley Springs in their school building, so we're working with the Legion out there. But I, I think the security concerns are, you know, they're trending to the future, so we're, you know, and, so I'm looking for new places. I think I've got a pretty good thing here. I don't have my final confirmation from five of the schools, but I'd just like you to know that I realize that switching all these places from the election center back to new precincts is problematic. The city of Sioux Falls has decided to go back to the precincts. And so they're going to drag the school along with them on this next election, and I don't know what the school's going to do on their standalone in the future. But the school has also agreed with me that since they're coming back to the precincts, that we're going to do a mass mailing of every voter in town and inform them of their new precincts. The ones out in the county, we're good with, they pretty much stayed the same. But I just wanted you to know that soon I will be bringing these new precincts forward, all, all the precincts forward, and we will note the new ones. And if you want to discuss it at that time, we will. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, Bob, isn't it true that a number of the churches also have additional restrictions on our operations there? And I know anecdotally that some people don't want to go to churches to vote, they want to go to public buildings. And didn't we have like a garage where we were using as a voting location?
We did. In the primary, I could not get Laura B. Anderson out there. And so the precinct committee lady had just built a brand-new garage, and it was ADA, it was all level going in there. And so they, they did indeed, and it turned into be kind of a neighborhood party. And I would have you know to, know too, that when I first started doing elections, I was living in Palm Springs, California in nineteen eighty-six, I think it was, when Sonny Bono was riding for mayor. And it was not uncommon for us to have a precinct in the garage. Matter of fact, I had a precinct in the garage. Uprides this brown Harley-Davidson motorcycle, and a guy with rumpled hair, and it was mayor. It was the mayor of Sonny Bono, and I had to chase him off. I told him I was glad to meet him, but he couldn't be hanging around the precinct. So I don't think this is unusual. We've also had a precinct for twenty-five years, out somewhere in between Dell Rapids and Garrettson. And it's called the Hee family farm, and it's been in the garage out there. I would also have you know that that veteran who disliked, thought it was disrespectful for having the garage, when he approached the superintendent out there, Rose, she'd been in the service for twenty years, and then she'd also served as a nurse for thirty-four years. The rest of that time, twenty years, after the twenty years, she went to the VA. So she was a veteran for far, for quite a while too, and she seemed to think it was okay. So, the garage thing, I don't have a problem with it, but it's got to be heated in the winter. So obviously, that was a stopgap to get us by there, and it worked out quite well. You know, the, the other thing, you know, some of the churches, when I, when I first started here out in, in Dell Rapids, they had it at the Legion Club. And there were seven steps going up into the Legion Club, or maybe it was, I don't know if it was a VFW or the Legion Club. And the wheelchair access was a gravel lot in the back with a twenty-eight inch sidewalk on there that let them in the back door. So I moved it up to the Lutheran Church. And then I got the argument about should the states, you know, and, and religion have, you know, such a relationship, you know, is there separation of the church and state? And, you know, all we're looking at is the facility. And there is no religious indoctrination. You might see something on the walls from the Sunday school, you know, you could see that in a, in a regular school too, or wherever we go. There's, there's things that somebody's going to object to. But I got to look at the facility as being ADA. I got to have a big parking lot. We've got to be able to walk in there. We've got to have room for the election workers. I got to have a bathroom and a kitchen nearby for the election workers to take their breaks during that long twelve-hour day. Those things mean something to me. It's not, it's not, whether it's a church or not, or a garage or not, I, I have other things that I have to look at, so.
Thank you, Bob. With that, we will move on to routine business. Item number ten is approve the county commission meetings from December twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is bills to be paid in the amount of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Is there a motion?
There is. Pay the, pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
You know, out of nine hundred thousand dollars today, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars went to workers' compensation from our different departments. And we had another hundred and seventy thousand for E nine-one-one. So we had basically six hundred thousand going to those two items.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is reports. There are none. Item number thirteen is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is recognizing significant employee anniversaries for two thousand sixteen.
Good morning. I have a list of six for you this morning. We have Neville Smith and Joel Mueller, both with the sheriff's office, celebrating ten years of service. Jill Van Veldheisen, who is an education assistant at the museum, celebrating fifteen. Scott Hacking, a CO at the jail, and Kevin Gans, a curator of education at the museum, both celebrating twenty years of service. And Pete Charles, who's a deputy sheriff sergeant for the sheriff's office, celebrating twenty-five years of service. And I think we have at least two individuals in the room with us today. Any comments? Kevin, Jill?
Thank you for coming and sitting in on our meeting. And thank you to the people who aren't here, they're working, so.
All right. Thank you.
And with that, well, item C is the volunteers, to speak about the volunteers of county departments for two thousand fifteen.
Total of two hundred and sixty-eight again last month. So every month I say this, it's amazing to me how many volunteers we have working for us and helping us out in over ten areas of the county. Sorry, thanks go to them.
Yep, thanks to them. Item number fourteen is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number fifteen is notices and requests. There are none. Item number sixteen is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number seventeen is petition for compromise of lean. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If you would like to speak to the commission on anything that is not on the agenda, if you would give your name and address.
Robert Colby, Sioux Falls. The reason I came at all this morning was not because of the first part of the year.
You're going to pass that around?
It's noon somewhere.
Who say you might work better? Fifteen, let's see, I've been off about six, seven years since I retired. This is to comment about the article in the Argus this morning, dealing with the county may get some break with alcohol tax. I made a presentation to the legislative committee dealing with this probably around twenty years ago. Jeremiah Murphy was a lobbyist for the beverage industry, the alcoholic beverage industry at that time. If you use this as a hundred percent full of taxes, and I didn't have any kind of a measure, but we're visual, and, but the article this morning hit the points, but it didn't quite get to the point where I felt the person understood what we were talking about back then, and still today. This is a hundred percent tax filled. About this much is what the feds take on alcohol, when it comes, comes into South Dakota. There's already federal tax on it. Before it gets into the warehouse, the state takes about this much tax. So, then it goes to the liquor store. Then, there's a four cent sales tax that the state takes, about this much. Every dollar of sale beyond what they get on the wholesale market, and beyond what the feds take. Feds, state, then there's the state tax on the sale, and then the little bit above here, that's the two cents on every dollar that the city gets off the sale of alcohol. And then, what's left over is the empty bottle. That's what the county gets. People are visual. They have to see and understand where the tax money goes. None goes to the county. Yet, I'll use we, being a former, over the hill, has been, whatever. We get to arrest them, so does the city, but then we get to prosecute them, we get to defend them, we get to hold them, we get to adjudicate them, we get to house them after the adjudication. And if the family is dependent on that person, then we get the welfare to aid and abet that family. The visual, they have to see it. Federal, state, state sales tax, city sales tax, and we get the empty bottle. Jeremiah Murphy said, you know, yours is the only argument that holds any water. And if Jeremiah Murphy said that, that was one of the highest compliments I've ever been paid while being a county commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Colby. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. I just wanted to take this opportunity to embarrass two of my employees. Fourteen and a half years ago, Kevin and Jill took over the museum's education department. In that time, they've increased our outreach programming numbers, particularly working with schools, by four hundred percent. They're in eighty-eight different K-12 schools in a year, in twenty-four different school districts. They do an outstanding job. They bring a wide variety of programming to the public, and work very closely with the schools. I think they're both outstanding employees.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Bill. Any other public comment? With that, we'll go on to regular business. Item number eighteen is the annual review of the Minnehaw County Facility Power Outage Response Protocol. Robert Wilson.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Robert Wilson. Again, this is a item for review. We're not looking for your action on this, but this is a review of the power outage protocol that was developed about five years ago, back in two thousand and eleven, was four years, four years ago. And it was implemented as of January one, two thousand and twelve. And really, for a little bit of a history, it came out of a number of power outages we had over a summer, where the, the power went out, and was not an on-campus issue, and employees were, reached out to a power provider, and we couldn't get a real clear sense of exactly how long the power was going to be out. Did, should we, should we shut down? Should we, should we keep people in place? What are, what are some of the issues that we're dealing with if we keep people in place without, without power and, and emergency abilities in the buildings? And so the, the power was, that was the, the background that, that the policy was developed out of. And, and really, what it, what it spells out is the, the process that we will, that we will go through on a security level, on a facility schedule, level, on a personnel level, in the, in the case of a power outage. And it's, has, mostly involves facilities and security and IT, with, with a lot of our hardware coordinated through our office. But it also obviously involves all of our employees as well. And so I present, present the report, or the policy to you for your review. This has also been distributed to department heads for their, for their review. The, the one point that, that we always want to, want to stress when we take a look at this, is that there, there is a, a callback provision in this, that if there's a, if there's a power outage, and it, it looks like it's going to last an hour or more, or there are life safety issues with being in the building, when, while the power is out, employees can be dismissed with the ability to then recall if the, the power comes back on to finish out that business day. And that's, that's just something that we always want to make sure that, that people are aware of, that's in that policy. And we, we submit this for, for your review and for department reviews, as outlined in the policy, that we, we need to at the beginning of each year. We present this for your review.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Is there a motion? Oh, it's just the review? We don't even have to have a motion. All right. Item number nineteen is authorize the chairman to sign agreements between Minnehaw County and Dr. Jeff Luther for quality assurance services for the rural ambulance review.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions for Robert? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty is update and status report of the ninety-first legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaw County. Robert Wilson.
And, and this is our first of weekly reviews of, of bills during the two thousand sixteen legislative session. So far, we still have a fairly limited number of, of bills that will, that are introduced at this point, the session. I believe it officially-
at this point, the session. I believe it officially opens January, Monday or Tuesday next week. We have the, the Good Morning Sioux Falls Legislative Breakfast later this week, which is in, in my mind, always sort of the official start of the session. And then they make their way to peer and, and get, get going from there. But the, really the, the bills that we're looking at at this point that affect counties largely come out of the legislative summer study. And I mentioned a number of these last week during old and new business. But I just wanted to review a couple of them for you. We've got a couple of bills that are largely cleanup. I know a lot of times when they do these summer studies, they go through and just look at any, any language, just statutory language that would be appropriate for update. And we have one large bill that is, does just that. And that is House Bill. That is 1003. And then we, we've got a couple, one that removes a requirement within departmental legislative audit and a report that's required by the, the auditor's office to, to present the report of the unreserved, undesignated fund balance that they have to report. And it's, as I understand it, it's a little bit of an anomaly. It's not a, a mainline report that, that most auditors track. It's not one that, that really is used for, for tracking county finances specifically on the state legislative end. And it's just always been a little bit of a, an oddball there. And so that's one of the, the cleanups. We've got one that, as you know, in case of inclement weather or, or another emergency, it is the prerogative of the county chair to close the county if, if that is needed. Currently, that statute says that it can be closed for a day. This gives the ability for, for longer than a day, permissive, ability to close for a longer stretch of time if there's a, a requirement of that. Then we get down into some of the, there's House Bill 1005, an act to revise and repeal certain fees that are established to compensate counties for services provided by county officials. And this really is an update for some of the, the fees charged by the sheriff's departments for some of their civil services that they provide, as well as some of the services in the treasurer's office. Really updates these. As we're going through the committee hearings over the summer, it, it's been, been decades since some of these fees were updated. And that's looking, and I believe that even with this move, a lot of them don't fully cover costs, but they get closer to their, their actual costs. And then House Bill 1006, an act to authorize counties to impose a sales and use tax, would give counties the ability to implement, again, permissive, up to 1%. That, that came out of the, the interim study. And then also, House, Senate Bill Two, act to revise the distribution of revenues from the alcoholic beverage fund. And this is one of the taxes that former Commissioner Colby just referenced. It's at the distribution level. And currently, that tax is distributed on a percentage of 25% to municipalities, 75% to the state. This would amend that to 35% to counties, 35% to municipalities, and 35% to the state. Again, it's early in the session. We're going to see a lot more bills. And, and as committees start working through this, we'll have, have updates for you. But that is our, our first look at legislative items. And stand by for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Robert?
It's not a question, a comment, Madam Chair. As Commissioner Colby showed, this issue of alcohol tax has been here for decades.
Yeah.
And Senate Bill Two, I think, has a great prospect of getting passed inasmuch as it actually does not raise any taxes. It just does a redistribution of an existing tax. Madam Chair, you've often said that we have enough taxes. It's the distribution that's the issue. And I, I know that some of the conservative senators that were in those hearings kind of felt that also with this bill. And so I think there's an excellent prospect that some monies might come to the counties through this redistribution bill. And that, that would be a huge step forward for us. And.
It would be a huge step forward. So. Any other comments on Robert?
I would, I would just also point out that Mark Lee with the chamber is, is here, is very dedicated about his observing and being at many of our meetings, has also been a, a good friend to the, the county during legislative sessions. And just wanted to, to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to liaison. Oh, yep, Mark. Yep, absolutely.
You've been named.
Thank you for the introduction.
Yeah.
I'm Mark Lee of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And as Robert pointed out, tomorrow morning, we do have our Good Morning Sioux Falls breakfast. I just checked weather bug. It's going to be 23 degrees tomorrow morning.
Ooh, balmy.
Which is about 25 degrees warmer than we typically have during that day. So we'd love to have you come and, and hear what's going on at that. That's a, it's a great event and it is a great kickoff for the session. Regarding the legislative session, I just, again, as we work with you and work with the city and work with other organizations in the community, if you have anything that you want from me or from my colleague, Justin Smith, who lobbies also for the chamber on the community's behalf, do not hesitate to call. Robert knows how to get ahold of me. Carolyn knows how to get ahold of me. We'll follow up on any kind of information you want. We'll try and help, help you understand anything that we hear that's going on, the context of it. Things move sometimes very slowly and then all of a sudden, very quickly out there, as you know. So we're here to serve you. Happy to do that and look forward to doing that and look forward to a good session. So, thank you.
Mark, is there any questions for Mark? Okay. With that, we'll move on to liaison reports. Item number 21. Item number 22 is old business. Is there any old business? Looks like none. And is there any new business? Okay. And I guess we'll look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.